Workshop meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board is called to order. Thank you all for joining us. A roll call, Madam Secretary.
All board members present except for member Deidre Spimberg. She's not here in person tonight. She's participating by phone. And we have a quorum tonight.
Thank you. We have a quorum and Laura Leila did say that she is listening and paying attention to the meeting. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. As we are two weeks into September, I again want to thank all of our teachers, administrators, staff, families and students for all of their hard work this year. We know there are lots of unknowns in a constantly changing environment. So once again, thank you for all you do each and every day. First, we will move to consent. On the consent agenda this evening, we are approving the following items. Personnel report, claims, payroll, school safety plans. We are approving the school safety plans as part of the consent agenda because of the confidential nature of the plans. The board had a presentation on the plans in executive session last Tuesday as permitted under the Indiana Open Door Act. We have also had the opportunity to review the plans before we vote this evening. I want to thank David Woodward and our SROs and all the others involved in putting these plans together, hoping that we never need to use them, but recognizing our obligation to be prepared in the event of emergency situation. May I have a motion to approve consent? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Thank you. We will now vote. Please vote by raising your hand and verbally saying if in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Four zero. Dr. Beresford, would you like to make some introductions? An introduction this evening?
We do have a very special introduction night, but I'm going to defer over to Dr. Osterich, who's going to welcome a new staff member.
Thank you, President Kirschner, Dr. Beresford and members of the board. We are extremely pleased to welcome Mrs. Emily Bauer as our new Director of Community Relations. And Emily is with us this evening. Carmel Clay Schools received 128 applications from candidates all over the state and beyond for this important role. Emily earned her bachelor's degree from Indiana University in telecommunications and her master's degree from the University of Southern California in journalism. Emily is passionate about public education and has a child that attends Carmel Clay Schools. Emily has managed and executed various types of communications deliverables, including newsletters, social media, web content, press releases and online courses. As an agency producer, she was responsible for all production aspects of video, radio, photography and digital projects for clients, including the Hoosier Lottery, Lilly, the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, Chinette and Roche. Her background in journalism includes a reporting fellowship and internships at CNN International in London and KNBC in Los Angeles. These experiences and others will be an asset to this position as she is comfortable writing and executing various deliverables accurately and on deadline. She can efficiently work cross-functionally with multiple departments and brings a can-do attitude to every assigned task. Finally, she has served as an associate producer on America's Got Talent, seasons two and three, and has worked as a production assistant with the Academy Awards and the Grammy Awards. We are excited for Emily's future with Carmel Clay Schools as she is a highly organized communications professional with a wide array of experiences that will make her an asset within our school community. Welcome, Emily Bauer.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Osterich. Welcome, Emily. We are glad to have you aboard and I'm sure we'll be putting you to work soon. We will move to workshop topics. The first workshop topic is the presentation of the 2021 budget. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This will be the first presentation of our 21 budget. We'll have two others that will come before the board. There's no action this evening. I will go through the various budgets and then at the end I'll share the calendar, specific calendar as to what comes next. So our budget really consists of five major funds. We have an education fund. We're fortunate to have a local operating referendum fund and also a school safety referendum. And then in addition to that, we have an operations fund and a debt service fund. So the education fund, which is about two years old, I believe now, consists of expenses that are really directed to the classroom. So it's everything that you would think of that's in the classroom. Other supporting expenses such as central office expenses and so forth are in a different fund. So it's our major fund, but it's also really supplemented by our local operating referendum, which is also used for the same expenses or can be used for the same expenses as in the education fund, but it can also be used for other expenses that previously were, and some of them were in our general fund, such as custodial expenses, our edu care program and so forth. And so, and you can see it's, that budget is $24 million, so that's very significant local funding, additional funding really that we have. That's very important to us. Then the third major fund is the, is the operations fund and that replaces three previous funds, the transportation fund, the bus replacement, the capital projects. So it has all of those expenses in it as well as, that's where we buy most of our technology. And then the debt service fund, as the name implies, is primarily used to retire debt obligations typically for large facility projects. And then finally, we have a new fund, starting this year in '20, which is the local school safety referendum. We were the, we're the first school district in the state to have this referendum. So we feel very fortunate that our community approved that referendum for us. And so our total budgets are almost $193 million. And specific to our education referendum, and I typically combine these two for purposes of presentation because we do use them essentially for the same things. And so we will have, our projected revenue at least is just over $133 million. And you can see that the majority of the funding, which is the state basic grant at 81%, does come from the state. And in this case, we are, there's two primary factors in that. There's a, there's an amount per pupil, so the number of students that we have becomes very significant. And if there's any gross growth or loss of enrollment, that's significant as well. And so this budget is based on the information from our demographic study, which projected 61 additional students. And then we've assumed no change for '21, '22 because this is the second year of the biennium and so this year is. And so we do not have a school formula for next year. So typically, rather than me just guessing, we just assume no change. And so there, no doubt will be change, but we haven't assumed any difference on the revenue side and likewise on the expenditure side. So I would also report that our current counts on enrollment, we're down about 200 students. So we haven't, this isn't, the official count's not until, I believe, the 18th of September. But this very well could be high from what, what was projected. And by the way, we were up about 200 students for 2020. So it's almost an offset from what we increased beyond what we projected or what was projected for 2020. And then finally, we also have referendum levy and it's increasing a little over $800,000. And so, you know, that will, we'll look forward to that. On the expenditure side in these two funds, again, we're projecting slightly more expenditure than, than revenue. That's typical because we want to be sure that we've assumed enough expenditures. Or so we tend to be more liberal on expenditures and more conservative on revenue. It's just an appropriate budgeting process. And this also assumes that we would spend, actually expend all of the appropriation and that's typically not the case because at the end of the year, if you have any non-personnel expenses, purchase orders and so forth, that those will be outstanding. And then under the major categories of expense, we're assuming in salaries, we know that for 2021, we gave a 2% increase to the salary schedule plus increment. But again, in '21, '22, we've, we've assumed no increase, not because we think that's what will happen, it's simply we just don't know. And then in benefits, we're, this anticipated a 5% increase for 2021 and then we're also projecting a 5% increase for '21, '22. And then in the non-personnel items, such as the, for contracted nurses and transfer tuition and so forth, supplies and travel, those are really based on either current trends or in the case of what we call controllable expenses like supplies and travel, we've assumed no increase. Now going to the projected cash balance, we began 2020 with a $9.3 million cash balance and combined in these funds. We're projecting at the end of '20 to, to maintain about the same 9.3 million cash balance. And then we do show a slight decline to just almost $8.9 million at the end of '21. But again, that's very conservative because we would, we would rather be low on that than, than anticipate more money that may not show up. Now with regard to the operations fund, we have revenues coming in of just over $30 million. This fund is, is, the revenue is essentially from local sources, which would be primarily property tax, as you can see here, as well as excise tax and financial institution tax. On the expenditure side, we're anticipating spending $27.5 million, so less than what we're projecting to come in. And you'll see where that will come into play here in a minute. But, so the same information on salaries as the other fund, as well as the benefits. And here we have the non-personnel expenses, which would include everything from utilities, property insurance and so forth, and those are based on current trends. And then buildings and improvements are based on projected costs that we've, that we're estimating for the various projects. So here, and the cash balance here is, is not as predictable in some ways as, as the education fund, which is, you know, 93% salaries. This fund, given that it has construction projects and so forth, the cash balance can vary depending on the timing of the projects and when they're completed and so forth. Nevertheless, we do look at it and keep track of it. And so we began 2020 with a $3.9 million cash balance. And we're projecting a cash balance at the end of '20 of $4 million. And I want to point out that we're showing expenses, but also showing less, referred to as less rainy day transfer of $3 million. And I've made some informal comments about that previously, but what I'm anticipating doing is making a recommendation that we move this $3 million from the operations fund to a rainy day fund. And because certainly the current situation with the pandemic is a rainy day and this is, our district has not typically maintained a balance in the rainy day fund. We have used a rainy day fund before and some of you will remember during the Great Recession that we, we moved money into a rainy day fund to cover a shortfall that we received of almost $4 million that, that we received from the state. And so this is similar in that sense in that this truly is a critical point in terms of revenue or anticipated loss of revenue really. And so, so I'll be bringing that recommendation to you later, but that's what's referred to here. And then you'll see by the end of '21, we're showing another transfer of $4 million. And I'll explain how we'd anticipate doing that and why we, we have the funds to transfer in the first place. So we're very fortunate in that we had, had a, managed our funds in the operation fund. Prior to that was a capital projects fund to, to make up a shortfall that we had for our employee pension program. And you'll recall previous meetings that I shared that during the Great Recession, we, we lost anticipated investment earnings from those funds and to the point that we, we, we needed additional revenue. And so we've managed that now in a recurring way. And of course, that's a, that's a benefit that, that is no longer available. So the cost of that goes down every year as the employees retire and so forth. There's not new employees going into that program. So, so we had made up that shortfall in 2019 and so the, our plan, but also at the expense of, of operational expenses that we otherwise would make to maintain our facilities and so forth. And so in the short run, we can manage that, given the size of districts and the coincidence that we have sold a number of bond issues recently, in recent years. And so, so we were able to, to cover that expense, but now we, we did anticipate re, kind of recommitting those funds to our operational needs and primarily facility needs. But given the pandemic, my recommendation will be is that we will transfer some of those funds to the rainy day fund to help us through this difficult time. And then beyond that and separate from the coincidence of the pandemic, I had anticipated transferring some money into the rainy day, or recommending that we transfer money into the rainy day fund so that we would be able to include that as a part of our cash balance. Normally, when we talk about cash balance, we're talking about the referendum fund and the education fund. And so, but when we sell bonds, standard and pores will consider money in a rainy day fund as, as part of your cash balance as well. And indeed it is because should we have a rainy day, the money would be available there the same as, as our cash balance in our education fund. So I'd anticipated doing that, making that recommendation, which is really not knowing what the future might bring, but what I'd be recommending is, is that we will see as, as we go forward, you know, what the financial situation will be. But certainly we would use available funds to get us through the difficult time of this pandemic first, but at some point then still try to maintain, leave some reserves in our rainy day fund. And so that's, that's the explanation for why you're seeing that here. Okay, now in, in the operations fund, we have, we, we're required to have two plans and advertise those plans. One is a capital projects plan and, and included in that plan is any expenditure that exceeds $10,000 for a capital asset or any other project that would be considered capital in nature. So typically, if it's something that we would, would potentially inventory, then that would be a capital asset. But it would need to be a $10,000. And that's each. So like technology, for example, all the computers we buy, they don't, they're not included in this requirement because on a, on a per item basis, they're, they're not that large of an expense. Then the bus replacement plan, which is a 12-year cycle for replacement. That plan is a five-year plan and we're required to, to advertise that plan as well. And then in our debt, so then our debt service fund, you can see here, all of our debt will be paid off, that we currently have, will be paid off in 2024, except for the bond issue that we just sold to primarily cover the two elementary schools that we're building. And so you see the others then will be paid off either in '23 or '24. And then the cash balance in this fund, we started out with just over $10.5 million in, in January of '20. We project to go to $8.3 million and so declining cash balance by the end of this year. And then by '21, a $7.5 million cash balance. So there's two things that, that's causing that to go down. One is, is that old, older bonds, we were permitted to carry a 50% of, of the payment. 50% of that amount is a cash balance. So we make bond payments twice a year. So basically you could have a third payment in reserve. But they have since changed that to 15%. So that guarantees that whatever, even if your outstanding bonds were the same principal amount, that the cash balance would be less. But, but primarily the reason this is declining this year is because, because we planned that as a part of our management of our debt service rate. So when we sold the bonds for the elementary school, we're using, this year, we're using some cash balance to make the pay, make the payment so that we, we, because we did not want to raise the tax rate. We didn't need to raise the tax rate because then in, in the next year, as these other bonds pay off, we'll have sufficient tax rate latitude to, to manage the payoff on those bonds without, without raising the rate. So it's more or less a one, one-time proposition. Plus, as those bonds pay off, of course, you, at that point, you can't have a cash balance for, for bonds that you no longer owe principal on. So it'll come down anyhow as we pay bonds off. And finally, our tax rates and levies, and, and you can see there's the, the levy amount and the corresponding tax rate for all of our funds. And, and this chart shows that we intend to maintain an 85 cent, just almost 86 cent tax rate, which is what it is in '20 and we're, we're anticipating the same for 2021. So we will be very close to that. And then finally, here is the schedule. And as I said previously, after tonight's presentation, we'll ask for authorization to advertise for a public hearing as, as is required as a part of the process. That hearing would be conducted on September the 29th. And then on October the 26th, we'd ask the board to adopt these budgets and then we will send them to the Department of Local Government Finance and because ultimately the state has to approve our budgets as well. So that's my presentation and I'll be, I think I'll respond to questions if you have them.
Thank, thank you, Roger. I know, Pam, do you have a question? No, it was already answered. Go ahead.
Thanks. Can you tell me right now, the per pupil about that we get? Do you know what that is at this point?
I don't recall the exact number, but it's right, very close to $6,000 per student.
$6,000 this year?
Yes.
Okay. And that, how much was that last year? I mean, what, what would be the increase?
Yeah, it was about, it was about 3% less than that, whatever the math is on that. And the 6,000's rounded up. It was a little under that, I believe.
5,000 something?
Yes.
Okay. And you said that the utilities are, are increasing at their current trend. What would that be?
Utilities are doing, for us are doing well right now. Depends on the utility, but on an average, they're, they're about 2%. So it's fairly insignificant. In utilities, what will ultimately end up, the cost is, is the rate certainly. That's one part of the equation, but the other part of the equation is, is the climate and, you know, the temperature and so forth as to how much air conditioning we use and then in the winter, how much heating.
But all of that is now being paid out of the operations? None of it's in the education?
None of it's in the education. It's about $2.5 million is out of the operations fund and the balance is now out of our local referendum. And the reason we're, we, the first year of the education fund, we did, you may recall, we did transfers. And because the, the, the funding from the state still, still comes in essentially at the rate that it did when we had a general fund, which included utilities and other, I'll say non-instructional expenses. And so we found the transfer process to be very cumbersome and since we're a district that has a local referendum and we can use that referendum for any, any expense, at the time it was approved, we had the general fund and so it was any expense that was in that general fund. And so in '20, instead of doing transfers, we moved those expenses that are not allowable in the education fund into the, into the referendum fund, rather than paying them out of an operations fund, but then transferring the revenue to follow the expense. And so we just avoid that whole transfer of revenue and so forth and tracking of it by, by putting it, putting those expenses in the education.
Okay. So you're saying that referen, the referendum fund is paying for you, some of the utilities or all of the utilities?
No, some of them. $2.5 million. It's, it's about $2.5 million is paid out of the operations fund and that, and that amount is what previously was paid from our capital projects fund. So the end result is the same in terms of the impact of the, to the education fund. All the expenses that are no longer permitted in the education fund were moved to the referendum fund as opposed to paying them out of the operation fund, but then having revenue from the education fund go to, transferred to the operation fund to cover the cost of those expenses.
Okay.
So the end result's the same.
And the property insurance? I know that we pay the property insurance out of the operations fund.
Right.
Can you tell me how much that's going to increase with the opening of two new buildings? Or will that?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, but you know, we're not adding a building in this case. So, so we have, we have expenses for the two buildings we have now. And so the difference is, is, you know, that we'll have two new buildings instead of the two existing buildings. So there may be some additional cost for insurance, but it will not, in the scheme of things, it will not be, you know, significant, I don't believe, because
Okay.
there's, there is a replacement cost, but the way our insurance works is, is they're really insuring all the property as opposed to, there's an amount for each building, but it's, you know, but the total amount of insurance that we have is, is for all the buildings. So if any one, unless they all, you know, go away at the same time.
Go at the same time.
It, it doesn't change, change much at the end.
Okay. And two more questions. You're moving 300, $3 million to the rainy day fund. Can you remind us how much we've lost due to COVID at this point?
Yes, we've lost a little over $2 million and that I, and that's how I would refer to it, to, to attribute it to the COVID situation. Most, if not all of that, we're anticipating to be a, a one-time or a one-year expense. We would hope by, you know, this time next year that, that we wouldn't, in other words, we, we, we had to hire additional teachers this year and some additional IAs because of running a dual program of virtual as well as onsite. And so we are assuming that we'll not find it necessary to do that a year from now. And so those will be one-time expenses. And then, as I had said before, we're anticipating a, a loss of revenue, not for this year, but for '21, '22 because since our education fund is funded with sales tax and income tax, we know for sure that the pandemic has had a major impact on both of those. And, but it's kind of a delayed process. So even though that, that would seem like that's right now, the impact at the state level will, will really be for '21, '22.
And they haven't projected what that's going to be?
Well, there's been any number of projections, including my own, but I won't bother sharing mine because it's not worth much.
It is.
But there are people out there that kind of spend a lot of time with those sorts of things. And, and so the number that I've heard most consistently as an estimate is a loss of 5%. And so if that materializes and if that happens to be the number, then we're talking about 5% on about $100 million.
Okay.
We could easily be, come up
We could have more in the rainy day.
And of course, that's, that's comparing this year, 5% losses compared to this year. Normally, we're talking about how much more we're going to get. So, so if, if, and based on the last couple, this past biennium, for example, if we use that and said, you know, the average increase was over 3%. So we, if we not only would not get a $3 million increase, but rather got a $5 million decrease, then the, kind of the total impact of that might look more like $8 million. might look more like $8 million. But it'll be, almost assuredly be significant.
Okay. And then can you tell me the, the difference between what we put in the budget for the education fund and what appears in the actual education fund? In the first, the first chart, you have, oh, no, never mind. It's not the education, it's the operation, operating referendum. 24 million, that's budgeted.
Yes.
But later on, it says it's only, says it's 19 million for 2020 and 20 million for '21.
Yeah. So the one number is a budgeted number, and the other number is, is a levy. So, so, and you, and it does seem like, well, wouldn't they be the same? But they're not always the same. And, and my example that I gave with the debt service fund, the expenses, because we're using some cash balance in that fund this year for '21. So we will appropriate some cash as well as, in addition to what we would receive for the current year. So, so a budget can reflect, that can be one example where you could be using cash balance. In this case, we're not using cash balance. What we are doing is paying other expenses that, that are, such as edu-care, for example. Our, our childcare program is over a million dollars. And that revenue comes from, from fees that the parents pay. But it's tracked through the referendum fund. And so that, that adds revenue. But when we look at the levy, that's only from taxes. And so what I'd call miscellaneous revenue, most, most or all of which is kind of money in and money out, such as fees, increases the need for appropriation to spend that revenue.
Okay. One more question?
Sorry.
Um, let's see. Is there a limit to how much we can put in the rainy day fund? That just occurred to me.
Now, the law states that money that is unneeded and unencumbered from other funds can be put into the rainy day fund. I believe it's limited to 10%, but far more than we'd likely have that's unneeded. So there's a maximum amount that you could put in there. But the key is, is it has to be essentially not needed, and which means that it's not encumbered.
Okay. So we could put more than 3 million in there?
You could if we had it to put in there. And, and part of that, having it to put in there, is a conversation about, I mean, you can have a whole conversation about, well, I'd rather put money in the rainy day fund and, and not, you know, maintain a, you know, mechanical system in a school, for example, or any other expense, or, or buy less technology. And, you know, so you can have that, you know, those conversations. So there's some kind of matter of opinion perhaps. But it really starts with, you know, what are, what are our needed expenses? And again, that, there's some room there for a matter of opinion. But I, I think we have to be very careful with our operation expenses because most of those expenses are non-personnel. And what I've, my experience has been that when you talk about expenses in an educational organization for personnel, unless you have, you know, one teacher and one child, you never have enough teaching staff because we'd all like to have lower pupil teacher ratio. And, and most of the expenses in the operation fund are non-personnel. So, so, you know, we don't hear from buildings about we need to be maintained or we need, you know, up, you know, to mow the grass or whatever. So it's incumbent upon all of us to kind of protect those needs because they indeed are needs. And, and it takes all of it to, to deliver a quality education program. And so one of the biggest challenges, I think, is, is balancing those needs.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Roger. Any other questions from the board? Katie?
Yes, for, sorry. For those of us, for those who are watching and learning, can you explain a little bit about the differences between the operation referendum and the school safety referendum and what they can and cannot be used for?
Yes, I'd be happy to. One, with regard to the operating referendum, we're one of about 50 school districts out of 300 and some school districts that are fortunate enough to have an operating referendum, which had to be approved by our voters. And the operating referendum can be used for really about any expense. I, I was accustomed to saying any expense from our general fund because that's how it was. But, and now it's, it actually has broader use than that because first it can be used for any, what we call an educational expense or in-the-classroom expense. But it can also be used for really anything else. And because we have other sources of revenue for things like buses, for example, we would never use an operating referendum to buy buses because we have other provisions and other funds. But, but, so anything that would be in the classroom or, or anything that we do not have other funds that would support those. And then the safety referendum, as I said, we were the first school district in the state to have a safety referendum approved by the voters. That, that fund for us started in January of '20. And so the legislation was passed in July of '19, which, which gave authority to establish a fund. And so the safety referendum, the use of that fund is much more narrow and, in turn, under the law. And it's very specific what it can be used for. And, and there's four or five things. But just from memory, it's anything that you would think of in terms of safety. And, and, and so in our case, it's specifically targeted toward putting school resource officers in, in every school. Up in, prior to this year, we had resource officers in, in, in our secondary schools. Then the, the middle school resource officer also had corresponding feeder elementary schools, but they were not physically present at school. So that's a, a major component of what we will use that referendum for. And, and another major piece is for student and behavioral health. And so at a previous meeting, we talked about the providing therapists in the schools. And we're talking about therapists for students, not for staff. And so that's another major component of, of the safety referendum. And, and again, unlike the operating referendum, it's very specific to what you can use it for. So what you can't use it for is, is other expenses that have nothing really to do with safety or, and they consider behavioral, you know, student emotional health part of safety as well.
Thank you. And then my second question is, can you talk a little bit about the salaries? I know in 2019, our teachers, certified staff got a 4% raise. '22, and then it said, I don't remember how you phrased it, no increase for '21, '22. No, we haven't done negotiations or anything yet for those. So can you explain a little bit more about what that means?
Yes. Well, in the first, in the first year of the biennium, as you noted, the board approved increases of 4% to salary schedules plus increment or a step increase. And then, and part of that, about half of it actually, came from the fact that the state lowered our, our employer's contribution to teachers' retirement fund by 2%. So that freed that money up to make it available for staffing or staffing expenses. And then in the second year, this year, 2% plus that same, you know, similar increment. Now, going forward, and we, we bargained contracts in the case of our teachers' association. In the case of other employees, the board chose to provide the raise that was given. And now going forward, we, we have not started a bargaining process. And we couldn't start it by now because there's a, there's a statutory requirement as to when you can formally bargain. So that's part, half the equation. And then the other half, though, is we don't have a state funding formula. So we have no idea what kind of, we call it new money or what kind of money, you know, funds will come in for that, for the '21, '22 school year, let alone the '22, '23 school year. So, so that biennium, the state legislature will start meeting this, in the spring. And, and they will come up with a formula. As I said, our concern is, is that that formula will be affected by this pandemic. And certainly in the first year, but quite possibly in, in both years and possibly beyond that. The last, the great recession, it took us six years before the state recovered enough to, to get our funding per pupil back to what, actual dollars, not counting inflation, to actual dollars what we received before the recession. So, so again, have no idea what the timeframe will be for, you know, the pandemic.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Roger. Lynn, any question? Good. Thank you. I guess I really have a comment rather than a question. And I'm glad this slide is up. I always say that the operating referendum is about 12% of our budget. And here, it looks like it's really 12% of our total budget. Nope, back where you were.
I know, but I thought I had a percentage or something.
Oh, okay. So, so that's still accurate. But then also, I didn't really realize till I'm looking at this now, it's 24% of our education budget. So when we say we're thankful to our taxpayers for passing that and allowing us to have those funds, it really is a big number. And if we didn't have that number, we wouldn't be able to do close to the things that we're able to do now. So I think it's important that we all just recognize how big a percentage is out of the total budget and out of the education fund. So thank you, Roger. And we'll look forward to hearing about this a couple more times.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the presentation of the student handbooks. Dr. Woodward, Dr. Woodward, David Woodward.
Okay, thank you. As you know, along with the policies that CCS has adopted from the board as our guiding procedures throughout the corporation, students and their parents often refer to the student handbooks from each building for information about what are their daily procedures. Because these handbooks have such visibility and such weight, it's important that, per best practice, they be submitted to the board every year for approval. Now, over the course of 2019, 2020 school year, the building principals and assistant principals met with myself doing several workshops in order to review our handbooks and have some uniformity through these, through our books. And so now, all of our elementary schools are uniform and consistent in language and format, whereas before, we were, they were very segmented, very different. All of our middle schools are now consistent in language and format. And the high school has a consistent format with the other schools as well. Now, it's important to note, there's no major changes with regards to content. But there were significant changes with regards to format, consistency, uniformity. So I'm going to show you all a few examples of the, the format that we've adopted and the uniformity that has come with that. We'll start with the elementary schools. So we're going to go through the online piece, but it's important to know that every one of the buildings has a couple of the handbooks printed and available upon request for any families or students that might want that. So as you'll take a look at College Wood Elementary, you'll see that this is the exact format that all of our elementary buildings have adopted. So if we are wondering about attendance policy, and we have moved from College Wood to Town Meadow or across town to Cherry Tree, we know that typically the rules are the same. But everything is here now in a much more standardized way than it had been before. We can do the same with code of conduct. Whereas before, wording could get confusing and some things could be interpreted a different way by community members, now everything is very standardized. The same is true with, well, all of them as we go through, but with emergency preparedness, facilities usage, et cetera. Now, there are some exceptions to the rule. I'll show you Mulholland Trails. You'll notice that the handbook information is all there. It's still the exact same, school to school, building to building. However, they've added a policy for biking and walking. A couple of our buildings have done this, where biking and walking is a legitimate concern and, and needs addressed with regards to the handbook. Some of the buildings don't have that because biking and walking is not an option. There's no, there's no trails, there's no sidewalks, et cetera. Another example would be Orchard Park, the principal there, but really strongly that she wanted her carpool procedures laid out in her policy or in her handbook. And because that's going to be different, building to building, based on the layout of each building and the traffic flow, et cetera, she felt that it was important to have that specific for her building. Now, others might adopt that going forward as well. But it would also be very specific. And it wouldn't fall within the rest of the handbook that has been standardized throughout the corporation. The middle schools, all of the middle schools decided to go the exact same with regards to their format throughout their websites. All of the language exactly the same. There's also a printable version that is exactly the same for each of our middle schools. High school, the high school was kind of its biggest animal. Like, it's, it's an animal all its own because there are a lot of intricacies to that high school. You're talking now about students who drive. You're talking about students who drop and add classes. So the format is still very much the same. But specifically, there are a couple of things. I'll go with, well, we can go with lockers. We can go with internet usage, specifically with student resource time, which is very unique to the high school. And with student services, where there are some very unique things to the high school with regards to records release, information for military recruitment, schedule changes, et cetera. So again, very specific to the high school, but still in the format that's been adopted through all of the buildings throughout the corporation, making it much easier for parents and our students as they either move within the corporation or they move up throughout levels in our schools that they're very familiar with our handbooks, the format, and the content. So we will be meeting to update these yearly and submitting them to the board for approval yearly. As we go forward with this, we'll be making changes, making sure that we, we've adapted and we grow as needed. That being said, I'm open for questions for the board and improvements that we can make going forward.
Thank, oops, thank you, David. Do have, I know Katie has a question. Go ahead, Katie.
The first one is, I noticed that the middle school and the high school address in grooming standards do not match. Specifically, I noticed that in middle school, it says no halters, tank tops are off the shoulder. However, that is not represented in the high school. As a mother of a daughter, I can understand the halter and the off the shoulder perhaps, but the tank top makes absolutely no sense to me. So that's my own two cents there. The next question, so I guess my question with that is, is there going to be some consistency between, you've talked a lot about within individual schools, but is there going to be consistency between like middle school to high school for some of these?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it wouldn't be unusual for the rules to change a little bit as they, as they adapt. That would be true with some dress code, certainly with transportation, with schedule changes. What you're asking specifically, I'll have to investigate a little bit. But yes, what we did really with this first phase is uniformity amongst the grade levels. So all the elementaries, all the middle school, and then the high school adapting the format. What we haven't done yet is then work amongst those for some linear adjustments for all of those rules. But I'll have to investigate that one in particular. And there might be more than that.
Yeah, I just noticed that particular sentence. My next question is, My next question is, is I see specifically in the content code section, bullying, hazing, gang violence, those particular things are specifically listed and certain consequences for those things. But there's other things such as discrimination, and I'm sure a litany of other items that are not specifically outlined in the handbook. They are represented in our policies. Can you explain a little bit of how, what makes the handbook and what doesn't?
Yeah, another really good question. So, because we have so many policies and we need a lot of policies, it would be impossible to put all of the, it wouldn't be impossible, it would be impractical to put all of those in a quick reference student handbook. It's important that we have all of those policies. Some of them are required by law to be in the student handbook. And I'll take the gang policy, for example. We're very fortunate in Carmel that we don't have a gang issue. However, by state law mandate, we have to have that gang policy in our student handbook. Doesn't necessarily make it more relevant to our community, but it is required, and that's why it's in that handbook, as opposed to some other things that are equally as relevant.
Thank you. And my last question, do you have an idea or timeline of when this will be brought back to us? So, the what you have right now, that's, is this live on our website?
This is, yeah.
And so then, this is something that will come back to us in order to approve? Or what is your thought process and timeline for that?
Yep, so first, we wanted to submit and give an overview of really what the process looks like and what we have that's out there. And then give the board time to review that, provide us feedback. And then we will meet as a group to make sure that we have all of the language that's been requested by the board, again, with uniformity, and make sure that it's acceptable for the board and for our principals. And then we'll bring that back for approval for this group.
Lynn?
I don't have questions. I just want a few words about the board policies and student handbook. So Pam and I are working together on the policy committee, and we have been looking at the overlap of student handbooks and board policies. And this, thank you very much for doing this, making the handbooks here in consistent format and also by, you know, taking out those student behavior-related policy into student handbook. So that really simplifies, you know, what the board policy should be focused on. Thank you.
Pam, do you have any questions?
I just want to say that I like the format. It's much easier to locate, as Lynn said, on the policy committee when we try to work with the student handbooks and coordinating that with our board policies. It was very hard for some, for some of us, for us to be able to find these handbooks on their websites. So, I think this format, the way it looks, it's very well laid out. I've already given you a lot of, of my feedback on the elementary. I will try to get to the middle school and the high school as well. And, oh, on the elementary, or anyway, I, I asked you about the vestibules and the entering the schools. Are we going to put that somewhere in the handbooks so that people are aware that that's how you have to enter the school in the first place?
Yeah, we certainly can. One of the questions you had mentioned was talking about hitting the button for entry. And at the time that we had developed this, we were really looking at a kiosk option. Pandemic and limiting surface touches has really made us kind of move away from that. We'll need to readdress that process for this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. You mentioned that it was difficult to find all of them and to get all of them together. I, I can tell you that the people who were most excited to do this were our building principals. They absolutely loved the idea of getting together and having uniformity and getting everything easy for students and parents to access, but also for them to update. Because we have this now, everything the same, when we make an update, we can do it basically from central office and push it out everywhere. And that way, the wording is going to be exact. And our building principals loved that.
Less confusing for parents who are moving within the school corporation from one school to the next, because the rules at one school were different than the rules at a different school. And so I think this is much more consistent for all the parents.
Oh, for sure.
Well, thank you, David, and thank you to your whole team for putting this together. We really appreciate it. Next, we will move to action items. The first action item is permission to advertise the 2021 budgets, the capital projects plan, the bus replacement plan, and conduct a public hearing. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This will give us authorization to advertise for this hearing and the opportunity then for the public to have input on our budgets and our two plans.
Thank you. Since we just talked about the budget, are there any questions from the board on this action item? Pam?
Yes, can you remind us when the hearings will be, the public hearings? They're in your, they're on?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be our second meeting here in September.
In September, okay. That's the first one?
That's the only one.
Oh.
There's just one for the budget.
Okay.
And I, I apologize, I got out of order there. First, may I have a motion to approve permission to advertise the 2021 budget, the capital project plan, the bus replacement plan, and conduct a public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Katie, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Pam's already asked her question. Any other questions? All in favor of approving this action item? Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I did hear Leila's response, but the motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next action item is bid award for Carmel High School track resurfacing. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. As the title suggests, this is a bid award to, to basically, it's more than resurfacing the track. It's, it's, you know, replacing the, down into the base of the track. So, and we're, we're doing this, we originally planned to do this next summer or spring, but given the condition of the track, we thought it would be best to, and to be able to do it this fall. And in talking to the high school, they were willing for us basically to work around that, because of course it's football season as well. So that's the purpose of it, and this will ultimately be paid with bond funds.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the action item for the Carmel High School track resurfacing bid award?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie, a second? Thank you, Pam. Any questions for Mr. McMichael? Pam?
Do you have any idea of cost of the project?
Cost of it, yeah, that's the bid award, $476,000.
Okay.
Any other questions? Again, I'd just like to point out, while usually we do not have action items without discussion at a prior meeting, and Roger, jump in. If I'm speaking incorrectly, because of the timing, we're kind of fast-tracking this so that we get it in with all the other events that need to happen at that facility?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I also think it's important to note that there were bids solicited from 11 contractors. Three responded, and the recommendation is based upon the recommendation of the Skilman Corporation, who helps us with these type of projects.
That's correct.
Thank you. So we'll now vote all in favor of approving the recommended bid award. Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Thank, aye, thank you. Any opposed? No, motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to updates or reports. Superintendent's report, Dr. Beresford.
First, I wanted to say that we did not know that Leila wasn't going to be here tonight. And she's said aye on every one of our action items. And I texted our legal, our legal people and have not gotten a text back, because I don't know if the governor's order that expired, if it was, if it was re-upped that you can vote remotely, which we were able to do earlier in this COVID environment. So, so I'm keeping track of him, Leila, on there, she's on the phone there. And, and we'll, we'll see what the, what the decision is on that. Just a few things I wanted to share in my report. First, in the world of sports, we had a great weekend, really a great week. And our, our cross-country team swept the Invitationals that they ran in. Our women's golf's continued their win streak. And then our men's tennis team beat three of the top five teams in the state last week. Our volleyball team's improving and had a good week. Women's soccer's were very, men and women's soccer were very dominant, you know, with victories over some great teams. And, and we kicked off the Unified Sports season with some flag football. And if you haven't been to Unified Sports event, it's pretty special. And I, I'd encourage everybody to go to, go to one. But probably the highlight of the sports week was on Friday night. The Greyhounds had built up a pretty good lead, and Norse, or the Pike Devils, Red Devils came back ferociously in the last quarter. And in the last seconds of the game, they tied the game, and it went into overtime. And then both teams scored right away and went into double overtime. And then this, in the double, second overtime, Pike was on the, you know, like the one-yard line. And, and they decided, they'd scored, and they decided to go for a two-point conversion to win the game. And, and it was a really good pass in the corner, and the, our Greyhound jumped up and tipped it away right at the last second, and the Hounds took home the victory. So, you know, it was, you know, you know, high school football is just, just a really neat thing. Friday night lights, and it was an exciting game. And the fans and everybody was really into it. It was, it was really good. Another heartwarming thing, at least for me, it made my heart feel good, was the marching band performed. And, and all the parents came, and they were able to do a show. And, you know, part of the, the experience in high school is that band and the game and the kids enjoying, you know, the, the atmosphere. So, really special night on Friday night. Not so great topic, we'll talk about COVID-19 update. But actually, we're kind of holding our own. Last week, we had eight total cases, and six of those were at the high school, and then two were at the elementary. And for the second week in a row, we had zero at middle school. So I probably just jinxed them, so I'll knock on wood. There'd been some questions about staff, you know, staffing, how the staff has weathered through this pandemic. And before school started, we had five elementary teachers and, or excuse me, staff members. This could be teachers, IAs, custodians, really anybody in, in the building. We had five in elementary, two in the high school, one in the districts. That was eight total before school started, positive COVID cases. And after school started, we've had two, two elementary exposures, and that's it, positive cases. So, so we actually dipped down pretty significantly since, since school started. Same thing with staff members who've been quarantined. So this would be not necessarily a positive test, but could be a positive test. Before school, school started, we had a total of 13, with five in the elementary, five in the high school, and three in our district office here. After school started, we've had 15, 15 quarantines in the elementary school, five in the middle school, six in the high school, and four here in the district office, for a total of 30. So you can see we've, we were quarantining a lot more than we are having positive cases. So this kind of data, I got this from Dr. O'Stryke over there. It's very fluid and changing. The quarantine numbers are probably the most volatile, because there'll be a bunch of kids come in and, and then some go out. And it just kind of, it's a daily occurrence now with those types. But the, probably the good, best news of it is that there's just not a whole lot of positive cases right now. So, we don't know really what to expect as we get into cold and flu season and how that's going to impact, or when it gets cold and we all come inside again. But we're cautiously optimistic, optimistic at this point. Wanted to fill you in on a little bit about elementary data gathering began last week, and it's going to continue to this Wednesday, so the deadline's coming up. But we sent out information to all the parents to gather data for who wanted to change, perhaps change their program, virtual or in-person, to the other. And we wanted to remind parents that we need all parents to answer the questionnaire. There's three options. I want to change my student to virtual, I want to change my student to in-person, and then the third option is, don't change my student. And so, but I think a lot of, a lot of our families thought, well, if I don't want to change, I wouldn't, I don't need to do this survey. But I want to remember, remind folks that, that we do need to do that. We'll be starting to pick up secondary data gathering for a second semester coming up here in October. So that'll be getting ready for the second semester for the middle schools and the high school. I want to talk a little bit about redistricting. So, we're excited to see the progress of our two elementary schools that are going to open next fall. There's been great progress, and, and I send the board pictures on a regular basis from Mr. Farron, who was here earlier. And so, we're really happy to see that. But with the opening of new buildings comes the need to rebalance the student population across the district. And to do that, we've partnered with Cooperative Strategies to help us build the new boundaries. And they work with geographic GIS systems and are experts at this sort of thing. So they're going to help us build the new boundaries. Mr. McMichael and Cooperative Strategies have been working on that process. And that will start, that process starts tomorrow with a letter going out to the community inviting people to engage in that process that we're going to use with, starting with a bunch of focus groups. And I think I'll ask Mr. McMichael to, do you want to, to add some detail to that?
Yes, so tomorrow really will be kind of the start of the process, as Dr. Beresford stated. It will begin by, we will want to identify various focus groups. And so, what a focus group will be is 10 or 12 individuals that represents various segments of our community and also our, our staff, our administration and building principals and so forth. But, so tomorrow, we will, we will send information out to parents and community members, so that we'll, we'll be looking for, to establish focus groups. Parents, for example. We would anticipate trying to put together nine parent groups, focus groups, as well as two non-parents. So, by non-parent, I mean, they don't currently have a child in this, they live in the community, but, but they do not have a child currently enrolled. And so we'll start that process tomorrow of identifying interest. And then those actual groups will do their work between, in October, between the 8th and the 12th. And then later, we will have community presentations. We'll develop options after getting input from, from the focus, various focus groups. And then we'll share those options at several community meetings and get additional input and reaction from, from the community. They'll also have options online, so, so even if you can't actually make a meeting, you, you will have an opportunity to respond one way or another and provide input. And then we'll, that'll eventually lead to a rec, or a presentation to the board in November, late November. And we're anticipating a final action item by the board December the 14th. And so that we, in the community, will know what the district's going to look like, boundaries are going to look like by the end of this year. And so, obviously, that would not take place then until the following school year. So, at the next board meeting, I'll give a more thorough presentation of this and also ask the board to, what we've identified criteria that we'll use to do the redistricting. One of the, what may seem obvious to me at least is, one will be closest school concept. And so what happens with that criteria will be that typically we'll find that not every student can go to their closest school, because the school may have a capacity of 750, and that may be the closest school for 900 kids. And so then we've looked to the, you know, kind of the next closest. So, so we'll ask the board to also approve the criteria that we'll use to, to do the redistricting, because obviously that kind of gives us direction on, on how to approach it. And as I said, I'll give a more thorough report at the September 29th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Yeah, Lynn?
I have a question. The focus groups include parent groups and community groups. So do we have, I think that community groups that mean non-parents, right?
Yeah, well, some, they may be parents, but they don't have school-aged children. They don't have- They don't have children enrolled currently in the school.
Right, so they are not CPS?
But they live in the community.
Do we have their contact information that we can invite them to participate?
No, that's something that I talked about earlier today, actually. And so when we talk about community members, you know, there's upwards of 100,000 people live in Carmel, and, which would include parents, of course, but, you know, a large percentage that's not parents. And so we don't have a way to contact everybody. And whereas parents, you know, we do have, so we can ask them directly. So what we're going to do to begin with is we will send the information out to all the participants that we've had over the last, what, 10 years now with our expedition. And of course, we will ask those folks, as well as everybody else, to share this information with your neighbor or, you know, anybody else that you know, that anybody that lives in the community. And then we talked this morning about trying to get some coverage by the current, for example, and various, you know, the media outlets where they're in a position to reach perhaps more people like within the community than we are. So we'll make every effort to make it known that if you live in Carmel, you absolutely have an opportunity to have an opinion and voice and provide input on what we're doing relative to redistricting.
Thank you.
All right. Katie, have a question?
I have a question for you. Can you talk a little bit more? I know there were some emails and stuff that went out to elementary school virtual, all elementary school families, you mentioned that. There's also some changes that have been made regarding making your choices and how long they're good for. Can you talk a little bit about that and the reasoning behind it, please?
Yeah, we, you know, of course, we want to get that data, you know, for the second nine weeks. As we said, we, the people could change at the second nine weeks. One of the things that came up, because we have a, where you could ask a question, and we monitor those questions over the weekend. And one of the common ones was, well, how long was this decision going to last for? Is it going to last till semester, or is it going to last till, you know, the whole school year? And so we contemplated that this morning, actually, and put out another FAQ that the decision would be for the rest of the school year, depending on what happens in the school year. So for instance, you know, first, I would just say that once a student gets that relationship with a teacher, and you've had that teacher for, you know, a semester, and changing to a completely different teacher, you know, at the semester is probably not in the best interest unless there's some kind of issue there. But if the COVID gets to where we're all going to, we may end up all being virtual again if, you know, some of the predictions that it's going to get a lot worse. At the same time, we're not seeing in our numbers a lot of, you know, a lot of positive COVID cases in the schools. So it could be a situation, we may bring the virtual, kids bring everybody back to school and do school as normal. Or it could be, we'll just stay where we are. But that's what our thinking is so far on this, on that particular topic. But the other thing is, it's very, it's very difficult to do the balancing act. And that's why we're collecting that data right now, because we're going to have to make some determinations on, you know, what is the number of kids we can bring safely back into buildings? Because we have to follow the safety recommendations of social distancing. So it's really complex, but we'll have to, you know, we want to look at the data. We didn't want to guess. And then we'll look at that and make some decisions at that point in time. One thing that's been consistent about this environment is that it changes constantly. And its level of complexity, and as we saw in their budget, the amount of money that we're putting out, we can't continue just to buy teachers and keep, you know, building, building, building. So we have to, we're going to have to make some tough decisions here and there. So that's where we are at this moment. And I always have to say, at this moment, this is where we are because it could be different in the morning.
While we're interrupting, I think it's important to note for the redistricting timeline that the reason we're looking to make a decision before the end of the year is to allow for transition and plans to be made second semester this year so that everybody is welcomed and ready to go when the new school's open.
That's well said. And I've, fortunately or unfortunately, I've gone through several redistricting processes. And really, that second semester, the key is, is once the decision's made, let's make this a great experience for our kids. Let's get them fired up, and let's give them T-shirts and rubber band bracelets. And let's have some open houses and visit each other and really get to know our new environments. Because kids are pretty resilient, but we want to make it a really, you know, a good experience. So working on transitions from moving to one school to another will be really important. And we'll need everybody on, you know, all need to team up on that, parents and staff and community. I can't remember where I was. No, I was getting ready for the bell ringer. And I don't know if anybody wants to guess what the bell ringer is for today, but it starts with the number 60. And we were notified last week that we have 60 National Merit finalists this year. And 60 is a crazy high number for National Merit scholars. I mean, you could probably add the total of National Merit scholars in more than one state, and it would not be 60. And so our scholars at Carmel High School, and then credit goes to their kindergarten through their junior years when they take the test, it's just an amazing number. And so kudos to all those kids and their families and all the teachers and staff members that have been in their community to reach that pinnacle of academic success. That is a new track record for Carmel High School, and it's just an amazing thing. So that's my bell ringer. But I do have just a couple of closing, just a closing piece I wanted to share with you. You know, I remember exactly where I was on 9/11 in 2001. And on Friday, I was invited to go to the 9/11 remembrance ceremony that Carmel put on. If you ever get a chance to go to that, you need to go. It is very, very meaningful. But I shared with our team last Friday that I attended that in remembrance of those who lost their lives. And it started at 8:46 on the button, which was the time when the first plane flew into the towers. And as part of the ceremony, they played a recording of the radio chatter of the New York Fire Department. And I had not heard that chatter before. And it was amazing, the amount and number of people that just immediately dropped and responded. And it was just a massive number of first responders that raced right into danger. And at the end, 343 firefighters and paramedics, 23 police officers, and 37 Port Authority police officers gave their lives that morning, trying to save everyone they could reach. And like I said, I vividly remember that day because I was working in a junior high school. And I think almost everybody who experienced that could tell you where they were, you know, what they were doing. And everybody could share their story at that moment. And although most of our students weren't born when this event occurred, it's on us to remember because we remember. And we tell the stories. We honor those who perished, those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And on that day, we experienced hate. We experienced fear. We experienced terror that day. But as that day unfolded, we also experienced courage and sacrifice and commission, and just a lot of compassion for other people, genuine love and care. So like I said, I was at a junior high, and we would share a quote every day. And we ended with the tagline that "The choices you make today shape your world tomorrow." And that was kind of our thing at that school. And, you know, I think it's true, and it's true, it was true then, and it's true today, that, you know, we as individuals choose how we're going to impact the world around us. And I hope that we choose to be people of courage and people of sacrifice and people of compassion and with grace and genuine love and care for those around us. Because as I shared with the staff, I think that's maybe the best way we can honor the victims of September 11th, 2001. And then in preparing for tonight, I thought, maybe that's the way we could make the world a better place for our children and our children's children and as we move forward. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for sharing those words at the end. And I, Friday meant to respond, and thank you for sharing your words to our staff because that was moving then. So thank you for doing that tonight and then. Also, thank you, Mr. McMichael, for the district redistricting report. And thank you, Dr. Beresford, for your superintendent's report. Even though technically not on the agenda, I just want to share our next school board regular workshop, regular session is September 29th. Our next school board workshop session is October 12th, followed shortly thereafter by fall break, October 15th and 16th. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, including Leila? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.